All right, everyone. It's currently 6:02. We'll start the meeting. Let's please take a row. Commissioner Lyde?
Here.
Commissioner Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Bray?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner? Commissioner Kreiner?
Here.
Here. We'll go ahead and start the Pledge of Leadings. Everyone, please stand. Ready, begin. I'll now go ahead and read the procedures for the meeting. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. The public may participate in tonight's meeting by using the Zoom link provided on the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that all virtual participants will be unmuted until they are called upon by the Chair, at which point they will be unmuted. If you are a member of the public who would like to comment on an item, use the raise hand function on Zoom. To avoid any confusion, please wait for the item you desire to comment on to be called by the Chair before electronically raising your hand. For each matter considered by the Commission, there will first be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project applicant. Testimony from supporters of the project will then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing late the public debate, all public testimony from those in support and in opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with the south bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on with the final bell indicating time has expired. All in-person public testimony must be presented to the Commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory matter shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the Commission in making these land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the close of the hearing. We'll start today's meeting with the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Hi, good evening, Chair Vang, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Israel Trejo with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioners have any changes to the agenda, or do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
We have a...
A second.
Perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. We do have, under the consent calendar, we have ID 231447, Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes. And then we have ID 231452, which is going to be continued to October 18th. Do we have any motions from the Planning Commission to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Diaz, a second by Commissioner Wagner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes. Do we have any reports by the commissioners?
I'd like to say that the APA conference was very well planned and went off very smoothly and was a great thing that you guys did on the record.
I too want to make a comment. City of Fresno did a wonderful job. Never seen so many planners in my life in one city. I think I want to say there's about 1,100 in attendance. I'm just having conversations with other individuals outside the city. It's great to know that we have very passionate people who are willing to kind of build the infrastructure for our future generation.
I also would like to add that we, I, I have a great appreciation for all of you guys. I don't know how you do it, but you guys do a really good job. So, thank you.
Great. And one last comment, too. We are in the month of October. Today is, what, October 4th. It's Breast Cancer Winners Month. You know, I think you never think that it's going to affect you one day. About three weeks ago, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer. So, when you hear that news, it's almost like your life starts at year zero all over again. So, I strongly encourage everyone to go get checked out because where you live at shouldn't determine whether you live. Okay? Any other comments?
Thank you, Chair. And by the way, the event was fantastic. Good work, everybody. I need to recuse off a few items. ID 231452. ID 231438. And ID 231456. And finally, 23-1431. I have conflicts in the area.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners?
One more thing to add. I will be here for 1432.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. So, what we'll do is we're going to move on to new matters, which is ID 231438. Commissioner, we'll go ahead and...
Thank you, sir.
We'll have you in the back and we'll call you back once we move on to your next item. So, this one is for consideration of development permit application number P2204122.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rob Holt, planner with Planning and Development. Tonight, staff brings forth consideration of an appeal of development permit application number P22-04122 and adoption of the related environmental assessment. The subject property is located on the east side of Abbey Street, south of East Minnetrotts and Louvio, and just north of Herndon. It is currently disturbed vacant land with adjacent uses to the north, commercial retail, the Coles, and to the south is the Costco Shopping Center, along with the Home Depot and other various retail uses. To the west, we have corridor center mixed-use zoned land, which consists primarily of auto repair uses and other various retail uses. Before getting into the project itself, staff wants to make note that this site was previously developed as a former Boomers Entertainment Family Center. And since then, towards the late year of 2017, it was demolished and then became what is today disturbed vacated land. The project is new construction of a furniture showroom that is 104,867 square feet in the CR Commercial Regional Zone District. It is considered a large format retail use, subject to Fresno Municipal Code Section 15-6704, which is a permitted use in the CR Zone District. And because it's new construction and a permitted use, it would be allowed with an approval of a development permit. The subject property, in staff's analysis, it concludes that it complies with development standards, including but not limited to setbacks, parking, landscaping, and the like. And taking this project to the District 6 Project Review Committee, it received recommendation of approval, seven votes to zero. The project required, based on the property's size and the development proposal, it required an initial study and mitigated NEDC. That, staff had completed and published a notice of intent to adopt that mitigated NEDC on May 5th, 2023. During the comment period of that timeline, a response letter and a request for notice of action was received on May 26th, 2023. Staff moved forward with an approval of the project and posted a notice of action on July 24th, 2023. And up to that point, during the appeal period, we did receive one appeal letter on August 8th, 2023. That appeal letter requested an appeal of the development permit and of the environmental document pursuant to SEQA. It should be noted that development permit is tonight. The SEQA appeal is for... SEQA appeals are required to go to counsel, but tonight's appeal is for the development permit as well as the adoption of the SEQA. Now, with that said, the concerns of the appeal letter regarded air quality, biological resources, and energy impacts of the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration. Further details of those concerns were addressed in the staff report. And tonight, we also have the environmental consultants answer any questions Planning Commission may have regarding that, as well as any public comment regarding that. So, based on tonight's presentation and the information provided in the staff report and staff's findings, it is staff's recommendation to uphold the Director's decision to adopt the environmental assessment and deny the appeal of the approval of the development permit. It needs to be noted that a development permit decision can be invalidated if the ultimate decision is not supported by the adopted findings or if the adopted findings are not supported by substantial evidence. Staff's recommendation for approval is supported by findings already stated in Exhibit F of the staff report. If a planning commissioner makes a motion that differs from staff's recommendation, the motion shall include a statement about which required finding or findings cannot be made supported by evidence in the record. And those findings are here. To end it, I just want to show what the proposed development would look like if it were constructed today on the subject property with an overlay. And with that, staff concludes their presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions from the Commission? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have the applicant? Please approach.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brian Saltikoff. I'm with Living Spaces Furniture, and I'm representing our project here in Fresno. And I would gladly answer any questions or if we have a short little presentation, I believe, or at least I hope Rob received, I sent him some files, some photos, just to kind of give you a better idea of what the buildings look like and what the interior looks like and kind of the operation, and any other questions you may have regarding the business itself.
I have a question. Since the concern on the appeal seems to be the displacement of wildlife, is there a way that you could do like extra landscaping to accommodate some of those, you know, trees and things that would make, actually make the... accommodate some of those, you know, trees and things that would make, actually make the parking lot look better and might also accommodate some of that wildlife?
Yes, I believe we definitely consider landscape enhancements. I believe there's about 35,000 square feet of landscaping proposed for the site as well. From what I understand, and I, I'm not a environmental assessment or CEQA expert, but from some of the things I've read, it doesn't sound like there was any species that would have been affected by this development, but definitely we would be, we would consider extra landscape enhancements to, to account for that.
You want to go ahead? You have a question or do you want to wait? Go ahead. That's fine.
So, I drove by the proposed lot last night and I noticed that right now there are no trees on that specific lot. It is dirt and overgrowth, shrubbery. So, based on the proposed plans, including the landscaping plan, I think it's going to provide some additional habitational elements for our local critters.
You have a presentation?
Sorry.
You're fine.
So, if you look up on the screen, you can, you can see what a finished building looks like, the architectural features out there. This one. I'm, oh, the remote, I got it. This one happens to be in Frisco, Texas. We completed a couple of years ago. We have about 38 stores from here out through Texas. We've been building, building a lot in Texas. We have Colorado, Utah. So, it's, the, the brand is, is growing. So, you know, the line drawings that you might have received don't reflect sort of like the finish of what these kind of buildings look like. This is an example of sort of the interior. You can see the, the finish in the wood and, and the, the way the furniture is all set up. So, it's, you know, it's, it's just a furniture retail showroom. We have a small cafe and bar area that we propose as well. We sell beer and wine there, not for any profit, but just more of an amenity for the, the shoppers. We do have A C U P associated with this permit that was approved as well, just to sell the beer and wine. And we have an application in for a type 41 alcohol license as well. We also, besides the beer and wine, we also have, you know, like snacks. We, we cook some chicken, chicken tenders and soft pretzels and things for the kiddos as well. Unfortunately, I don't have a very good photo, but we do have, have a play area for the kids. There's a play structure. If you looked at the floor plan, you would see that area. It's a pretty, pretty good size. It has video games and TV and the parents can, or guardians can drop off their kids, check them in with somebody who's trained, and they can go and do shopping while their kids are entertained in the kids' room. Here's another view of the cafe and the bar. Another example of the showroom. Another example of the showroom. And this is from our original pre-application submittal. As the conceptual drawings, you can, here's the floor plan shown. See, to the right, you can see those squares, those, that's called Revive. That's a separate sort of, not a separate business, but it sort of has its own identity. It's where we sell mattresses and bedding, pillows, that kind of thing. You can see sort of up in the middle, at the top, that's the kids' area I was talking about, than the wide open showroom. There's, the, the little bar is kind of hard to see, but it is open to the showroom. There's the colored elevations, what we, what we propose. The, the rear and side, facing 41. And that was pretty much it. I just wanted to keep it short. I didn't want to, didn't want to drag it on too long. So, I don't know if it, encourage you to ask any questions anymore, things that I can clarify on. I'm happy to.
Thank you. We have a question from the commission?
Yes.
Thank you for being here and thank you for investing in Fresno. I have to ask you, how many employment or how many jobs would be available to our local people and what's the percentage that you will hire local?
I didn't quite hear the, the last part. I'm sorry.
That percentage of local people that you will be hiring?
Oh, it would be, the majority would be local people. We're trying to get 70 to 100 people staffed in this building. Majority, we do local job fairs. Try to, try to get as many local folks to come out as possible. Well, you know, we do send, you know, the corporate people to go, come out and, you know, lead the training and get those stores set up and, and running. But it's, it's mostly as many local people as, as we can.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, now go ahead and we'll go, staff.
Just want to reiterate one thing that was discussed from the applicant. The conditional use permit for the ABC license is currently in process. It does not be approved. It is not being considered tonight. Tonight is an appeal of the development permit and adoption of the CEQA. But again, the CUP is not being considered tonight and that is currently in process but not approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. We'll now go to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment in favor of the application that are in the chambers? Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Kevin Dayton of Monterey, California. I'm a consultant on California Environmental Quality Act. You should, actually, I suggest have Mr. Saltikoff come back and move from becoming the planning commission to the labor commission. Because as probably you suspect, it's likely that this, this objection to the permit and all those objections has nothing really to do whatsoever with wildlife at this vacant lot. This particular law firm representing the laborers union, this is a very common practice done throughout California. Labor union will object to environmental review, object to a permit in these particular cases. And what they're doing is they're trying to delay approval of the project, increase the costs, maybe even threaten going to court. And the goal is to get some sort of labor concession, whether it's a project labor agreement or some sort of labor neutrality agreement for the workforce. It looks quite clear that this is probably going on here since nobody has really identified the great, great threat to wildlife or birds that's claimed in this. And I think you can tell looking through this particular report that there's something more here rather than wildlife and bird protection. This is a labor issue that's coming up here. And you had dealt with this last year with a bottling plant. Actually, you're going to deal with it again with another item in a few minutes where the unions are objecting to another project on environmental grounds. I think it's important to keep the California Environmental Quality Act focused on protecting the environment. That's what people wanted. And when people start using CEQA for purposes other than environmental protection, you should call out, call it out and say it's wrong. And you know what? CEQA is being undermined by this sort of practice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in support? Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Rex Heim with Western Electrical Contractors Association. Address is 7328 North Reddington Avenue in Fresno, California. This project has gone through all the correct steps and measures to make sure that it enhances the sustainable development and well-being of all the people who live in Fresno. The development will bring good paying jobs to get the project completed, as well as good paying sustainable jobs once the project is completed. And as we've heard, once the lot is landscaped and developed a little more, it may even add some more living spaces for the critters we care about as well. These delay taxes, these delay tactics used through CEQA alone are done all over California. It's not the first time it happened and it won't be the last. This project should not be delayed any longer. It should not be held hostage, held hostage to CEQA abuse and the people of Fresno should get to enjoy the benefits that will come with this project. There's a reason the conclusion was compliance and a recommended approval of seven to zero. Thank you for allowing the time to speak to me tonight and have a good rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in support? Do we have any individuals on Zoom?
Not at this time.
All right. We'll go ahead and we'll go to the public. Any individuals who would like to speak in opposition, who are currently in the chambers? I see none. Let's go to Zoom. Do we have any individuals with their hand raised that would like to speak in opposition?
I do.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Lisa Flores down at with Shawna McKinley. Couple of questions. You are going to be greening the property through ornamental trees and such, but you don't have any setbacks for major greening, greening along the roadway, the egress of this property. And I think the things that you're talking about is the critters are basically the birds, especially in relationship to the San Joaquin River and to Woodward Park. An empty lot to a bird flying around is a safe place to land. And with the construction of this, it looks like 50% of the lot is actually going to be asphalt and not that green. So, you need to consider that. Also too, as Fresno continues to push for less and less parking here down in the southern part of Fresno, why is this not also enforced to these big box stores? If we're forced to use transit and we're forced to use alternatives and we're forced to walk a block to get to our cars, then surely some of these stores don't need that much parking if we're going more to a transit oriented community. Also too, I would like to know, what is the cumulative impact in that area regarding traffic and the number of cars? Because if you've ever been driving out there, that little squiggly road that they're on, I forget what the name of it is. You know, it's a bane in my existence to ever go out there and down that street because it's hard to get out from those businesses onto that road and then to get onto Blackstone. It's one of the two worst little streets in Fresno, in North Fresno. Oh, and then also too, what is the employee breakdown of the positions? Because this sounds like it's a wine bar and you can buy, you know, a bed at the same time, like a wine, wine bar bed place. I understand it's a hybrid. I understand, you know, people want to drink while buying furniture, which is novelty to me. But what are the breakdown of the positions that they're going to have? For example, bar and food, are they going to have somebody at the kitty corner watching the kids? And also, what are the number of salespeople? And what are the wage ranges? Because, you know, in Fresno, you know, a sustainable wage helps versus minimum wage. So, that's just my questions.
Thank you, miss. Let's go ahead and move on to the next individual.
Okay.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Yum from the law firm Lazo Jury. I'm here this evening on behalf of Appellant Laborers International Union of North America, Local Union 294, or LIUNA, and its members living and working in Fresno. LIUNA respectfully requests that the planning commission grant its appeal and deny approving the MND and development permit application submitted by Living Spaces until an EIR is prepared for the project. In the time I have, I would like to address two specific issues related to the project and MND that support requiring an EIR. These include biological resources impacts and energy impacts. Turning first to biological resources impacts. LIUNA relied on expert comments provided by wildlife biologist Dr. Sean Smallwood as evidence that the project will have significant biological resource impacts requiring an EIR. Dr. Smallwood reviewed the, the MND and the biological resources assessment prepared for the project and surveyed the project site on June 5th and June 6th, 2023. Based on his observations and review, he concluded that the project's construction and operations would result in significant adverse impacts to wildlife. Specifically, Dr. Smallwood concluded that the project would likely have significant impacts on special status species found on and near the project site. While surveying this site, Dr. Smallwood observed 21 species of vertebrate wildlife at the site and another two species nearby. This included three special status bird species, Osprey double crested cormorants and northern harrier. The MND, however, incorrectly concludes that no special status species have been identified within the project site or in the vicinity of this site. Dr. Smallwood's expert analysis also found that the MND fails as an informational document because of its one inadequate characterization of the environmental setting as it relates to wildlife, two improper reliance on pre-construction nesting bird surveys, and three failure to adequately analyze the project's impacts on habitat loss, wildlife movement, increased wildlife collision mortalities from project generated traffic in the area, and cumulative impacts on wildlife. Turning next to energy impacts, the MND incorrectly concludes that the project will have a less than significant energy impact because it complies with the Title 20's appliance efficiency regulations, which courts have held does not constitute an adequate discussion of a project's energy impacts. The MND included no discussion of the project's cost effectiveness in terms of energy requirements and energy consuming equipment and the processes that will be used during construction or operation. Nor did it identify the project's energy use efficiencies by amount and fuel type for each stage of the project, including construction, operate, operation, and maintenance. Most notably, the MND did not address the effect of the project on peak and base period demands for electricity. The MND also attempts to satisfy the analysis of energy impacts by estimating the project's percentage of energy use compared to energy and fuel use for the entirety of Fresno County, but CEQA prohibits a type of drop in the bucket analysis. The MND also fails to implement all feasible energy mitigation measures, such as requiring all parking stalls included for the project to be CB stalls, without providing substantial evidence to show that the proposed mitigation measures are unfeasible. An EIR should be prepared to address the potential project's significant energy impacts and biological resources impacts. Given the substantial evidence that the project will result in a significant environmental impact, LIUNA respectfully requests that the commission grant its appeal and require city staff to prepare an EIR for the project. That concludes my comments. Thank you very much for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you, miss. I didn't get your address. May you please state your address, please?
Let me put her back in. Sorry.
It's 240 Athol Avenue, Oakland, California.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition?
No more hands at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comments. If we can, please, applicant, may you, may you please address some of these concerns that were brought up, more specifically, questions regarding traffic, a breakdown of employees, and potential range of wages?
Yes, as far as traffic goes, I believe we, there was a amended traffic study. That's a part of the report. I don't have the figures in front of me, but past, historically, there's, there's been minimal, or I should say, in compared to a large box retailer like a Target or something like that, furniture retail store does not have as many trips as a big box retailer store, especially like a Home Depot, which is just to the south of us. So, as far as specific numbers, I don't have that information at the tip of my fingers right now. As far as wages goes, I know we have a robust salary range starting. I, I can't speak to the starting range of salaries or hourly. But I know there's tremendous opportunity for growth within the company, within the company. Our HR, our corporate team does a great job of putting together all different kinds of programs for training. They train to, to move up, to apply for different positions. So, there's, there's a lot of opportunities besides from just, you know, selling furniture. So, that, I could get more specific information if, if requested. As, as far as, I believe, was the question regarding the, was it the cafeteria bar area?
An employee breakdown in regards to sales and those individuals working in?
Right. So, the types of positions, we have majority is in sales on the floor. We have people who are in, you know, product placement, which is they which is they sort of design the vignettes that you see out on the floor and they set up those vignettes. So we have lots of people involved with that capacity. We have the people who are trained to take care or watch and check in the kids in the playroom. So that's an intended area. So the kids aren't just running free and we have SOPs for that, you know, guidelines and certain things that need to be followed before, you know, they can be in that room or the kids could be in that room at all. There's training. They go for the bar, the food safe, the food serve, the, I think it's a national training that, you know, where you'd have to have like food handlers cards for the cooking. You have to do the same as far as serving alcohol. So there's, you know, as far as the bar goes, it's a pretty, pretty small area. It's about two hundred square feet out of a hundred thousand square foot showroom. It's not the main attraction. So it's mainly focused on selling furniture, accessories, carpets, beds, that type of thing, home furnishings.
Any questions from the Commission? Questions, comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the Commission. Do we have any comments or motion?
Well, I took heart when I saw Dr. Smallwood's report that so soon after the first place was torn down, it was regenerated by nature. So that's a long-term good thing. However, I, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the environmental assessment.
Chair, can I interrupt for just a second? So the Sequa is a recommendation to the City Council, so that one, but you can adopt the second piece. Does that make sense?
So I'd like to deny the appeal and uphold the action of the Planning and Development Department. I would second that.
All right. We have a motion made by Commissioner Bray, a second by Commissioner Diaz. Let's go ahead and take Roe on this one, please.
Commissioner Lyde?
I approve.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Motion passes. Let's go ahead and can we get Commissioner Hardy, please? Let's go ahead and staff repair. This is for item ID 231432. Consideration of an appeal of five regarding the denial of CUP number P2300593.
Good evening, Commissioners. Hope everyone's doing well. My name is Eric Young. I'm with the Planning and Development Department. Today, we have a consideration of an appeal to conditional use permit P2300593. This is an aerial map of the subject property. The subject property is approximately 1.07 acres. It is located at the northeast corner of North Grantland and West Barstow avenues. Again, in the center, we have the subject property outlined in red. It is currently zoned CC, commercial community. To the north, we have CC as well, community commercial. To the east, we have residential, single-family, and that is for medium-low density. To the south and to the west, we have residential multifamily zoning for medium-high density. A little bit of background. On August 5th of 2020, the Director approved conditional use permit number P19-04593, which approved the development of the site. It is important to note that the site is still under development. Also, in 2020, on November 5th, 2020, the City Council authorized the establishment of a Type 20 alcohol license that's for beer and wine to be consumed off the premises where sold. It's also important to note that the license has not yet been issued as the site is still being developed. Here's the site plan for the, for the site. Right there in red, we have a portion of the building that the Johnny Quick Food Store will be occupying. Also, a quick-serve restaurant in the same building. We will have the fueling stations, fueling canopy, as well as a second building for future commercial uses. Here are the elevations of the building, which is, like I mentioned before, is still under construction. And this subject application is conditional use permit P23-00593, and it requests authorization to upgrade and establish a Type 21 alcohol license. And that's for beer, wine, and distilled spirits to be consumed off premises where sold. Fresno Municipal Code Section 15-2706E pertains to the location restrictions. These consist of if the property is near a sensitive use, near other alcoholic beverage establishments, within high crime areas, within high concentration areas, and the citywide ratio. Numbers one and five were the only location restrictions that didn't comply. Number one being a preschool, approximately four hundred feet to the north, and the citywide ratio, based on the population of Fresno, were allowed, I believe it is, two, no more than 218 off-sale alcohol licenses. According to ABC, we currently have 502 active off-sale alcohol licenses. So we exceed the maximum for the citywide ratio. Section 15-2706F-6 are the exceptions to the location restrictions. Should a project not meet the location restrictions, they would need to meet all four of these exceptions. The only exception the project does not meet is letter D. Section 15-5306 are the CUP findings for all CUP applications. Letters A, B, C, and D, staff was not able to make those required findings. The upgrade request from a Type 20 to a 21 was denied by the Director on June 29th, 2023. And that decision was appealed by the applicant on July 6th, 2023. During the public notice and input portion, on April 10th, 2023, the project went before the Council District Two Project Review Committee, and they voted to recommend approval, three votes to zero. On April 14th, 2023, a notice of action to, a notice of intent to take action was mailed to surrounding properties within a thousand feet. Some of the concerns staff received pertain to nearby single-family homes and schools, overconcentration of alcohol licenses within a one-mile radius. You know, patrons already have the ability to obtain distilled spirits at nearby locations such as Shaw and Hayes, Parkway Drive in Herndon, and Riverside Drive in Herndon. Some more concerns were if we were to grant approval for the request, there would be an increase in loitering, trash, homelessness, accidents, crime, and other public nuisances, which would ultimately decrease property values. Again, on June 29th of this year, the Director denied the CUP request due to the project's noncompliance with the location restrictions and as well as the inability to make the CUP findings. Also, on June 29th of this year, a notice of action was sent to the surrounding property owners who requested one when the Director's decision was made. On July 6th, the applicant appealed the Director's decision. And on September 25th this year, a notice of public hearing was mailed to the surrounding property owners. No alcohol-related comments were received to date. It is staff's recommendation to deny the appellant's appeal and uphold the action of the Planning and Development Director to deny the CUP application, P23-00593, which requested to establish a Type 21 alcohol license. Should the Planning Commission choose to grant approval of the upgrade, the following shall be required. Make exception to the location restrictions. Amend CUP findings A, B, C, and D. Adopt staff's environmental finding, which was a Class One categorical exemption, and recommend special conditions of approval from City Council be included as conditions of approval for this project. And that does it for staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. A question for you in regards to the Type 21. Since we're no longer issuing a new Type 21, would they have to purchase an existing Type 21?
Correct. They could purchase the cancel and transfer portion of the Responsible Neighborhood Market Act. That would be one way to qualify for the upgrade. And another way would have been to meet those exceptions to the location restrictions. Yeah.
And then within that area, where is the closest Type 20 to Type 21?
Happy you asked. I actually have a slide that I would like to pull up. It's a slide that shows, you know, nearby on-sale, off-sale. So the subject property is right there in the center. It's located within Census Track 4218. The nearest off-sale active alcohol license would be purple, directly to the north. That's an easy-trip convenience store, Parkway Drive. It's a little over a mile away from the subject property. But as you can see in this image, there is only that one current active off-sale license within the Census Track.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the Commission? I see none. Thank you. Appreciate it. Let's please have the applicant.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm George Beal. My address is 1175 Shaw Avenue, Clovis, California. We filed an application to upgrade our Type 20 to a Type 21. We felt that there was a need in the neighborhood for this particular upgrade. The closest, there's two licenses. One's at Shaw and Hayes, the other license is at Herndon and 99 at the underpass. They're both about a mile and a half away. The residents in this area would have to drive a mile and a half both ways. Round trip would be three miles. We went through the process of notifying all the residents when we did our filings for this within 500 feet. We had no protests. We had no written protests from residents or anybody else for the Type 21 upgrade. The, there were no, actually, we did have a neighborhood meeting. We, it was an informative type of deal. We received no formal protest from anybody. We went to the Council District Two Committee meeting, which was scheduled for a review of what we were doing. We received all of the votes from the Council District meeting to approve the license in this particular area. If we receive the approval for this particular upgrade, we will be looking to buy a license in a high-crime area and an over-concentrated area to reduce one license. And I, as you heard, there's a lot of licenses in the city of Fresno. There's, you know, over the years, over the hundred years of Fresno's been in existence, it just kind of kept climbing. It was an easy business to get into and that type of thing. All of a sudden, you have sections of Kings Canyon, Olive, Belmont, McKinley that have four or five licenses within a quarter of a mile. What is it called in the Neighborhood Market Act that was approved a couple of years back? And they put restrictions and all of that? Well, this is one way to reduce a license one at a time, and that's about what's going to have to happen to get the reduction down. Reduction has occurred because people that have these small stores, they don't own the property. Now the value is in the license. And before, the value wasn't in the license. It was, you know, from $20,000 to $30,000. And by operating those small locations, they still inched out a living. So now, these licenses are up around $200,000 or more. People are not going to renew their leases in the small spaces if they can sell it and make a little bit of money, get out of that environment. And then, this is where the Type 20 is upgraded to a Type 21. We don't have a Type 21 that goes here. We, once we, if we get approved, we'll go out and find one. They're not, people up in Herndon and those areas, they're not going to sell them. The people that are going to sell are down in the areas that have a lot of problems. And this is one way of getting rid of that particular problem. The other thing is a mile and a half round to Clovis or Shaw and Hayes or Herndon and 99, that's a three-mile trip. So we're trying to reduce the trips that our customers are going to have to make. They're already coming there to buy beer, wine, other beverages, and things of this nature. Supermarkets are not building any new stores. Costco's building a new store. Supermarkets are doing nothing. So this is where the problem is. And we are filling in, in the neighborhoods that, where people don't have to drive for two, three miles in areas like this. You go down to some of the other areas, they just have the things that, you know, beer, wine, cigarettes, all the chips and things like that. But here, we have an opportunity to fill a niche for neighborhood. And we actually, we're ask for your approval for this particular license. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A question for you. With the Type 20, if you get this upgraded to the Type 21, what are you looking to do with the Type 20?
Well, we're gonna, where am I gonna find it at?
For the, if you get the Type 21, because you're going through the process for the Type 20 right now, correct?
Right, we'll be with the Type 20. The Type 20 doesn't go away. The Type 20 will be there, and we're looking to upgrade to a The Type 20 will be there, and we're looking to upgrade to a Type 21. What we're going to do is go down into the high-crime areas, the oversaturated areas, and find the license. And right now, I don't know of any licenses that are available. But you know, within a year or two, we'll find a license. We'll find a seller.
And then you have a daycare center about 400 feet away. Have you reached out to them and received any opposition or support from them?
Yes, we do. We got a letter in support from the Brighton daycare center people. They thought it was a good idea to get people off the road, reduce mileage and things like this. We got a letter from them when we got the Type 20. We got a letter from them when we told them we were trying to upgrade our license to a Type 21.
And lastly, hours of operation?
Our hours of operation are from 5:00 AM to midnight. Alcoholic beverage sales are from 6:00 to midnight. Those are state hours that we're allowed to run. The reason we open at 5:00 is this is the blue-collar area. A lot of people go to work at 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. They come in and get coffee, they get whatever, maybe burritos, things of this nature. But it's a really blue-collar area, and people start early.
Do we have questions from the commission?
I have a question. So you'd mentioned that you're looking to fill a niche in the neighborhood. Can you explain what other items you'll be selling aside from beer, wine?
I can't hear you.
You had mentioned that you're fulfilling a niche need in the neighborhood by having this 21 permit. So what other items are you selling here? Is it just beer, wine, chips, cigarettes? Or are you offering other more grocery-related items?
We carry a limited amount. It's not like a liquor store. That's not what, it becomes part of our product lines. We probably carry the top 10% of every product line that is there. 10% will do 90% of the business, and that's kind of how it works. But one thing I forgot to mention was, this is a very state-of-the-art operation. We have EV chargers there. All of our canopy and top of the buildings are solar panels. So, you know, these people in this area, they're going to have electric vehicles. There's nobody there in that area there that has EV chargers except for our store at Hayes and Shaw. The rest of, what is that? Polk and Shaw, there's three liquor stores there. None of them have EV chargers there. You can see they were built 20, 30 years ago. You know, we're moving to the new look of what convenience is all about. We actually don't have any problems with homeless in that area. We have a cleanup program. Our stores are pressure washed. Somebody cleans up every day. It's, you know, if you ever shop at Johnny Quick Food Store, you'll see.
Commissioner Hardy?
Thank you. Just to confirm, you guys do have a Type 20 license there currently?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you.
Staff, they're going through the process, correct? Can you clarify?
Yep. I'd like to provide clarification on that. According to the ABC website, that application is currently pending, so they are authorized to establish it. They haven't received final approval, so that has not been issued. And furthermore, if it were to be approved tonight to establish the Type 21, that Type 20 alcohol license cannot count towards satisfying the cancel-and-transfer requirements because it technically isn't there. And also to provide another clarification, applicant mentioned hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM. But the City Council did include a specific condition of approval on their prior approval of the CUP that limits the hours of operation, or at least alcohol sales between 12:00 AM and, no alcohol sales shall occur between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. So you'd have to postpone it till 5:00 AM, or from 5:00 till 6:00.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
I have a question for you, Mr. Beal. Thank you for being here. Would you be operating this Johnny Quick yourself, or is that something that you're building and will be selling it?
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Would you be operating the Johnny Quick yourself, or would you be selling it off to somebody else?
Our program is set up to, we operate some company stores. This particular location would be one of our franchisees. That doesn't mean that we take hands off. We do maintenance, all of the other things on the outside of the store.
Do we have any other questions? None? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll go ahead and open this to the public. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak in support? If so, please approach the podium, state your name, address. Do we have any individuals on Zoom? Put their hands raised.
No hands.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to the public. Any individuals who would like to speak in opposition? I see none in the chambers. Do we have any on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
All right. We'll go ahead and close all public comments. Let's bring it back to the commission. Do we have any comments, questions for the staff, or the applicant, or any motions?
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the action of the Planning Department.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion made by Commissioner Hardy, a second by Commissioner Bray. Let's go ahead and take vote. Please.
Commissioner Lyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
Vicester Hardy?
Yes.
And Chair Vane?
No. Motion passes. We'll go ahead and go on to the next item. Commissioner Hardy? You're gonna have to, you're pretty much done for the meeting, right? Are you gonna? Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah.
You're done? Okay. Have a good evening. All right, this is for ID 231456. Consideration of an appeal filed regarding conditional use permit application number P2300244.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Before getting to this item, with every planner's first presentation at Planning Commission, staff likes to introduce the planner, and tonight we are introducing Luke Reisner. Luke is from the Central Valley. He has been with the city now nine months as of yesterday. He is a recent graduate of Fresno State, where he graduated summa cum laude with a degree in geography, which excites me as a geographer. Love to see other geographers in the planning world. And also a minor in anthropology, as well as a certificate of GIS from Cal State Fullerton's program. He has been learning pretty quickly, including state bills, or Senate and Assembly bills, which, as you know, are complex and vaguely descriptive. He has been placed on our subdivision team, and he'll be working on subdivision maps and other residential projects, and in some cases, as of tonight, commercial projects. So you will see him a lot more often, considering he is on the subdivision team. We're happy to have him, and leave that with him. Thank you.
Perfect. Welcome. You're out of high expectations again.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Luke Reisner, and I am a planner with the Planning and Development Department. This item is a consideration of an appeal to conditional use permit application number P23-00244 and the related environmental finding. The subject property is located within the Bullard and Marx Shopping Center on the southwest corner of West Bullard Avenue and North Marx Avenue. The surrounding zoning classifications to the south and to the west are residential single-family, medium-low density, and to the north is commercial community and office designations. And to the east is more office designations as well as multifamily zoning classification. The subject property is zoned commercial community, or CC. The conditional use permit application requests to extend the hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM of an existing Type 47 alcohol license for an existing restaurant, which is locked in. Currently, the restaurant is authorized to operate from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM with the Type 47 ABC license. Restaurants with alcohols and bars are permitted in the CC Zone District, subject to a conditional use permit. Subject to, the actual table is 15-1202, not 1302. It is also subject to additional regulations, Section 152751 and Section 152744. Both talk about restaurants with alcohol and outdoor dining areas. The project as conditioned complies with all applicable regulations. The project was sent out to departments and agencies in a request for comment. The Fresno Police Department was originally in opposition to the extension of hours. However, the Police Department requested specific conditions. If approved, included within the conditions of approval. One of those conditions includes the prohibition of live music. On June 12th, the project was taken to the Council District 2 Project Review Committee, and the committee voted to recommend denial, 3 to 0. On July 20th, a notice of intent to take action was posted with the city clerk, as well as sent out to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property. Five comments were received from the public stating concerns regarding loud music, safety of residents, increased calls to the Fresno Police Department, as well as the business operating more as a bar than a restaurant. On August 7th, 2023, the Planning and Development Department approved the application authorizing the extension of hours from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, subject to compliance with the conditions, including the Police Department conditions. A notice of action was mailed to respondents, including the applicant, as well as the individuals who requested the notice of action. On August 17th, one appeal letter was received from the applicant. The appeal was in regards to the limitation of the hours of operation, as well as the prohibition of live music. However, it should be noted that staff has since received written confirmation from the property owner stating that they would not allow the business to operate past 12:00 AM. So therefore, the only appealable item is the prohibition of live music. And staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the action of the Planning and Development Department to approve the conditional use permit application authorizing the extension of hours from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and adopt the related environmental assessment, which is a Class 1 categorical exemption. That is all for staff. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission? I see none? Thank you.
And we also have a presentation from Detective Hodge with the Police Department. He is with the Northwest District. He's the pop officer for this.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll let him present after the applicant.
Okay.
Let's please have the applicant approach and connect your presentation, please.
Good evening, Commissioner and commission members. My name is Richard Lima. I'm from the Law Office of Henry Nunez, and I'm, we represent the applicant Valerie Richardson, who's standing to my right. And I will be making the presentation on her behalf, with your permission.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. As indicated, the only issue up is the prohibition of no live music. And Ms. Richardson opened this business in May of 2022, and she made great efforts and put in a lot of time and expense in remodeling the business and trying to distance herself from the previous owners of that business, which was known as Fat Boys. She did this purposely because she didn't want to be associated with the Fat Boys' reputation for that property. Now, since she's been open, she has had live music and live entertainment. That's been a feature of her business, as I indicated, since May of 2022. There was no conditions placed on her back then of the prohibition of live entertainment. The live music bands that she does bring into the business are well-known in this community. They have a following. They have a specific following, and they bring in customers to her business that order food from her kitchen and restaurant, also order drinks, and bring a lot of business to her establishment. The bands bring in a crowd that averages between 35 to 65 years of age of patrons. In addition, Ms. Richardson also hosts Open Mic Night on one of these days, which is live entertainment. And the Open Mic Night are local talent, some from the neighborhood around her business that come in and perform. And they also bring their following, that the patrons, and they do order the food, they do order drinks, and they do socializing in the establishment. Without this live music or live entertainment, or I should say, without having the no-live-music prohibition, it's going to severely impact her business. And it's pretty much, you know, a lot of her business comes when she does have the live entertainment. Now, one of the conditions from the Police Department memo dated July 17th was no live music. In their memo, they identify or mention 17 calls for service to Ms. Richardson's business for loud music and/or fights or other disturbances. However, in that memo, there is no evidence, or they failed to provide evidence, to show what these incidents are. There's no police reports, there's no incident reports, and there are no service call activity sheets that are attached. So we don't know what these incidences entail. And without substantial evidence to support these incidences, the allegations, they're just mere allegations, and they are speculative, and they should be disregarded. In addition, the failure to provide substantial evidence to support these allegations deprives Ms. Richardson of, is prejudicial and deprives her of due process because we don't know what we're looking at. We don't, we don't know what specific incidents the police are referring to, so we can bring in our own evidence to say, no, it didn't happen, or this call was to another business in the same area, or if it was related to unhoused people. Ms. Richardson has encountered unhoused people at her business prior to her opening, so we don't, we have no idea what these service calls are for. So Ms. Richardson, in order to mitigate the situation, she doesn't, she's willing to have a limitation on live music until 11:30, as indicated in the owner's memo in support of the extended hours. He did indicate in his memo that he approved of the extended hours, but he indicates no live music past 11:30. And Ms. Richardson is in agreement with that. That way, the bands can just wrap up, and then she can have her business closed by 12:00. No problems, no issues. She is requesting that this commission reconsider the no-live music. She is requesting that this commission reconsider the no live music prohibition and make an approval by striking that condition. And if they want to replace it with another condition, seeing any live music or entertainment on the premise of cease by eleven-thirty, she would be acceptable to that provision. We'd like to, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions?
I do. I have some questions. I was reading the tenant application, and it says that the owner-manager will be operating with support of a computer program, SPOT. Can you explain what SPOT means?
The business, just the business. Just the business. The business.
The business is the spot?
Yeah.
That is going to be assisting you manage this business?
Yes.
Okay. It also says that you will be offering banquet rentals. It's more like a nightclub? Is it, is it a dine-in restaurant? Or is it a banquet furniture rental place?
Oh, no, we're not.
No, it's more, it's, it's a restaurant business with a bar. And what she means by, there's, there's some events that people want to schedule, like private birthday parties, but she doesn't close it to the public. They, they just, they just make reservations for that event at her business.
Thank you.
Okay. I do want to clarify that as far as the other conditions at the, in the police memo dated July seventh, Ms. Richardson doesn't, doesn't object to them. She will provide the additional security. She will, she will do all, it, it's just that specific no live music that, that, that she is objecting to, so.
When you speak about having public safety, would that be a credential police officer? Or would that be just private security?
If it's needed, either or, whatever is, is, is needed to, in order to ensure the safety of her patrons.
And I do police contracts as well.
Yeah, I do. I already do.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have a question. When Ms. Richardson opened in two thousand twenty-two, and she didn't have this live music restriction, what were the hours of operation at that time?
Her hours were from nine to ten PM.
Commissioner Wady?
Yes, so I read here under hours of operation. It says, even though location may not be open to the public after midnight, in the event a private party wishes to stay and continue their private festivities, location shall operate until two AM. Does that mean that you'll stop at eleven-thirty PM regardless?
The reason why I was requesting to stay open until two is because LeBron James actually called down to the restaurant to try to reserve, and I had to deny him. And because we, at the time, we were closing down at ten. So he went to the, his basketball game, and he had to go somewhere else. And I was thinking, gosh, that would have brought me so much money just by taking a picture with him, showing all the clientele who came down there. That's the reason why I was requesting to stay open until two AM was to, just in case if I got this call again, a second time, that I will be able to stay open till two. But, but I'm okay with closing every day at twelve.
Okay. Just a question that I was asking regarding the hours. So if you were to stay open until two AM in terms of a private party, what would be the restrictions of a private party if you were to stay open till two AM? And would the music stop at eleven-thirty?
If, if that were the case, and, and again, we want to reiterate that Ms. Richardson is, is agreeable for the hours closing at twelve. But if she were to be allowed to stay open to two AM, again, we would adhere to ceasing the live entertainment at eleven-thirty, and that, and, and going, and just, she can just operate with the remaining patrons until, until, until last call, basically.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Wady?
This might be for Ms. Clark, but we have a noise ordinance for the City of Fresno, correct, of ten PM?
The noise ordinance actually depends on where the location of the business is. We can pull that up, and we can give you, there's a variant of timeframe, so it depends. And part of it, part of that is outdoor patios versus indoors. And so the, the overall noise ordinance in Chapter Nine is, is clear that certain noise cannot exceed, cannot extend past the property boundary, but we have additional noise requirements within Chapter Fifteen that are restricted based on the location, indoors, outdoors, proximity to residential, and hours of operation. So in Chapter Fifteen, I think Phil's pulling those up.
And there's a decibel requirement for that as well.
I would like to specify, Ms. Richardson's business does have, does have an outdoor patio. However, the door to the outdoor patio will, would not be open past a certain time because of, because of the safety issues. And plus, the outdoor patio is, butts up against, against Mark's Avenue. So there's safety concerns, and there's other issues where, you know, she doesn't want to be responsible for patrons jumping over the barriers and, and, and taking off without paying their tab or, or other, other issues that may be, may occur because of the patio being open and inaccessible.
So that, that seating section is closed off after a certain?
After ten, yes.
Do we have any other questions from the commission? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have the detective? Okay. It's on Zoom, correct? No?
Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioners. Do you guys have my? So while they're queuing that up, I will just start with one thing that was, I just want to address one question that came up, or one issue. To close this business for a private banquet would require a different type of ABC license that is not allowed under type forty-seven. The business shall be open to the public. Is it coming up?
As we're pulling up the presentation, we just want to reiterate to the commission and to the public and viewers that some information on this may or may not be appropriate for all audiences. Thank you.
Is it not working with their system? Okay. Great, there it goes. All right, we good to go? Yeah. Okay. So I'm Detective, Detective Hodge. I'm with the Fresno Police Department Northwest Investigations. I am the pop officer. I am the one who writes the conditions for, or our recommendations for our licensings. So we're here tonight about Locked-In Sports Bar. My first comment was, the license is actually under Locked-In, so Sports Bar was just a name that was added. See if we can get next. Am I doing this right? Stop, no, not going to the next slide. Sorry, guys.
Should we go ahead and like take a five-minute break? Is that okay? Let's take a five-minute break. If that's fine. It's currently seven-thirty. We'll resume at seven-thirty-five. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we're gonna go this way. So a type forty-seven license, in, in general, it's a restaurant authorized as the sale of beer and wine to distilled spirits for consumption on the premises. Must operate a bona fide kitchen and suitable kitchen facilities open to the public, minors are allowed on the premise. So originally in March when we, in March of twenty twenty-two, when the police department had placed our, our conditions imposed, we requested that the location be open from eight AM to ten PM. Originally, the restaurant was proposed to stay open till two AM. Due to the area and the previous business that was in there, the previous business, as already mentioned in this presentation, was Fat Boys, generated constant issues for the Fresno Police Department. Lots of noise complaints, disturbances, physical disturbances, disturbances spilled out into the nearest neighborhood. It should be noted that the nearest residence is a hundred and sixty-five feet from the property line of Locked In. Thank you, everyone.
Seven thirty-six, our apologies, I think it's that notification yesterday saying that one o'clock that screwed everybody's phone up, so. But we'll go ahead and resume the meeting.
Alright, my apologies, guys, but I think we got it figured out. So we'll go ahead and just go right to the next slide. Or not. Is this still not gonna work? I thought we got this. Okay, I guess we're gonna go this way. So a type forty-seven license, in, in general, it's a restaurant authorized as the sale of beer and wine to distilled spirits for consumption on the premises. Must operate a bona fide kitchen and suitable kitchen facilities open to the public, minors are allowed on the premise. So originally in March when we, in March of twenty twenty-two, when the police department had placed our, our conditions imposed, we requested that the location be open from eight AM to ten PM. Originally, the restaurant was proposed to stay open till two AM. Due to the area and the previous business that was in there, the previous business, as already mentioned in this presentation, was Fat Boys, generated constant issues for the Fresno Police Department. Lots of noise complaints, disturbances, physical disturbances, disturbances spilled out into the nearest neighborhood. It should be noted that the nearest residence is a hundred and sixty-five feet from the property line of Locked In. So the slide you're looking at up on the screen, those are conditions that were applied by ABC and not the Fresno Police Department. Some of the ones I wanted to note are, they requested the business to be open from nine AM to ten PM. Sales and service are permitted on the patio from nine to ten PM. Full and complete meals, no cover charge, no distilled spirits should be sold by the bottle, no happy hour, etc. One of the key things I wanted to note here as well is entertainment provided shall not be audible beyond the area under the control of the licensee as depicted in ABC two fifty-seven. And we'll get into that in a few, in a moment. If you go to the next slide for me, please. Okay, the licensee, or I'm sorry, the, the use of amplifying system device is prohibited on the patio terrace or other area, and the use of any such system or device inside the premise shall not be audible outside of the premises. Now, these are conditions that ABC applied, not the Fresno Police Department. And that is something that I would like to go back to later on this presentation. If you don't mind, we can actually go on to the next slide. So to base our denial, the extension of ours, the call totals we did take a look at were a timeframe from seven-ten of twenty-two to nine-twenty-six-twenty-three. And as you can see above, those are some of the calls that we encountered. One alarm call, which is actually pretty gen, uh, normal. What I did want to mention is the nine music complaints, and these calls all came from the public, public residents in the area. Nine times, the public notified the police department of loud music. Now, you're gonna see, I believe it's three slides. We don't really have to get into all of them, but as you can see, these are a breakdown of each call for service that was generated. If, if you look at those calls for service, it does, it did, it does show the location, the date the calls were from, and the event number. And if you notice, the vast majority of these are loud music complaints. These are, we did not take in account of any calls generated by law enforcement. So any call where an officer was just in the area, put themselves at the location to check the area for any disturbances, those were all ruled out. Again, these are all from the public. So we can move on to the next slide, sir. And I apologize for not being able to work this clicker. You can go, go to the next. Okay, so we took samples of nearby restaurants, and I'm sorry, I guess that font is pretty small to read. These are all type forty-seven, similar restaurants in the area. Caliche Town, Texas Roadhouse, Casa Corona, Ovidio's Italian Restaurant, Elbow Room. If you note the calls for service, and these are, these calls for service were all taken from the same timeframe of the call sample we took for Locked In. Caliche Town had eleven total calls, where Locked In had seventeen, Texas Roadhouse had nine, Casa Corona had three, Ovidio's had zero. They are in the same parking lot as Locked In, and Elbow Room had one. Two things to note about Caliche Town and Texas Roadhouse. They are on Shaw, a very busy corridor, there is very little residences in the area, and it's all commercial. And if you want to move to the next slide. Okay, nine-seventeen-twenty-two, on this date, officers were dispatched to Locked In for a call for service. This was at, and note the time, this was at eleven-thirty hours at night. And if we go back to our prior slides, I'm not gonna ask you to go back. The restaurant's supposed to close at ten. Subjects are seen by officers in the location drinking well beyond the conditioned closing time, the time imposed by ABC as well as Fresno Police Department. The owner told officers that the location was rented out for a birthday party. It should be noted that a type forty-seven license shall be open to the public, and the location cannot be closed for private parties. If you would go to the next slide, and I believe there should be a video. Can we play that? It should be in the bottom. So this is a short clip of a video that was taken of officer's body camera of that night. Just to narrate, what you'll see in this video is bartender behind the bar, people inside the location still holding alcohol, and drinking and consuming. Due to time constraints, we did cut the video short of a guy arguing with the officer about why the officers are needing a warrant. I guess we're not gonna have video. One thing to note, if you look around, there is no food on the tables. But if you do look in the far back of the, the video, you do see the bartender behind the counter. Again, this is at eleven-thirty at night. If the sound's not going, I mean, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So after I got word of that violation by patrol officers, the Northwest Station, or I as a POP officer, generated what we call a morpo letter, a notice of order violation. And this was due to the excessive calls for service. The excessive calls for service were mostly in part due to the loud music. So that's the mun, that's the section we used for the morpo. And it should be noted that this violation was hand-delivered to Valerie Richardson, the owner of Locked In, during a meeting I had with her at the restaurant. During that meeting, I also provided her, I, I don't have it in a slideshow, but a copy of some of the restrictions that, the same printed-out restrictions that ABC imposed that she had been in violation of, that we've discovered. So we can kind of skip through that. One thing you will note about the morpo process, I'm sure you guys are well aware of it, but that is the starting point to starting fines. So this next video, or next slide, is a couple of videos. And I, I know it's gonna be really hard to see, but if we can play one of them, if they will play. So these are videos, there's actually three videos, one's on the next slide. These are all videos taking, taken from Locked In, placed on their private, I'm sorry, not private, open to the public Instagram page. What you'll see is a party, people dancing, people twerking, half-naked women, gang signs being flashed, and gang attire. What you don't see in the video is food. For time, I mean, we can go to the next slide, all three videos are kind of gonna be the same, they're all from the same clip, we just had to break it into three, three separate slides. Okay, let's go to our social media posts. One thing I'd like to note that, it is not against any rules and/or violations to post anything of this nature about your business. The reason I wanted to include these in this presentation is if you look at these advertisements, advertising for events at the location, they all dictate no cover charge, Juicy Friday parties, if you want to go to the next slide, you're gonna see a lot of the similar. If you look up social media pages of any other local nightclub in Fresno area, this is the exact same format that those nightclubs use, with advertising of parties. Okay, we, okay. So on four-twenty-five, ABC had conducted a decoy operation at Locked In, an employee at the location sold alcohol to a minor. Locked In did pay a three-thousand-dollar fine in lieu of a fifteen-day suspension of their alcohol sales. This was confirmed with ABC. Okay, so with that, we were contacted by planning and advised that Locked In is now requesting to extend hours. Due to the fact, and the previous issues that we've had at the location, we feel that the applicant might need to, if she wants to operate as a club or nightclub atmosphere, maybe the type forty-seven license isn't appropriate. But I know we're not really here to talk about that. So one of the things that we are requesting, and from what I understand, nothing here i- is being challenged except for the live entertainment. The live entertainment is one of the issues that we're strongly opposed to. We are strongly opposed to it due to the fact that we've already had eight, in, in a one-year sample, eight noise complaints. Again, this is in the Bullard and Marks area, it's not in a, what I would consider a entertainment corridor. It's in more of a residential-commercial kind of mixed-use area, whereas some of these other locations that we have talked about on Shaw, and I'll, I'll get into another location here in a second, are in more of what I would consider business slash entertainment areas. More suitable for that type of business. So we require two additional security cameras after eight PM, one BSIS security guard per one hundred guests on the property. No live entertainment or band on the premise, and this is ex, ex, due to the excessive calls for service just from the noise complaints. And again, ABC's requirements, as well as PD's, no amplifying devices, shall be heard from outside the business. Kitchen will remain open during all business hours, fifty-one percent of all sales shall come from food. This used to be a requirement with ABC, I know it's no longer an actual requirement, but that is one thing that we are looking at. And there should be someone on the property who can operate the camera system at all times. Alright, next slide, and I'm almost done, I promise. So during my time in meetings with the owner of Locked In and the business, the business has been compared to Bobby's and Tower District numerous times. In the same timeframe, I took a sample of those same calls, of the same seven-ten-twenty-two to nine-twenty-six-twenty-three. The Bobby's and Tower District has generated one hundred and one calls for service. A vast macho, a vast majority of those calls came after ten PM. During that timeframe, approximately twenty-nine of those days of the opening time, the, the business had contract police officers, and that was between the hours of ten PM and two AM. Now, one thing I would like to reiterate is, I am never opposed to someone hiring a contract police officer. I think that's great. But we are operating a type forty-seven, a family-friendly restaurant. Why do we feel the need to have a contract officer on, on the property unless we feel that what we're doing on that property is gonna generate calls for service? It's gonna generate problems to our community. And with that, I am done, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Yeah, I have a question for you, Detective.
Yes.
The representative, individual representative, Ms. Richardson stated that there were calls out to that area, but he wasn't, he wasn't certain, it was in regards to loud music. Can you go ahead and just clarify how many calls were specifically for loud music?
Eight calls for service. And during several of those meetings with the owner of Locked In, I've actually showed her copies of the calls for service, which she says that we never, we never showed her, or gave her evidence. I'm not gonna release that evidence to anybody, that has to be through our records department, and that has been explained. I have shown her copies, which I have actually included them in this, there was three pages of them in this presentation.
Alright, thank you, do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Diaz?
The calls for service, who pays for those calls? The property owner?
Taxpayers. The calls for service, those are generated, police officers are gonna get called to your location, and that's gonna be basically a taxpayer cost.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys' time.
We're gonna go ahead and open this to public comments. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak and support? If so, please state your name, address. I see none, do we have any individuals on Zoom with their hand raised?
We do.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Lisa Flores, with Shawna McKinley. First off, I really take umbrage to any paid staff calling a woman who is tweaking half, you know, basically scantily dressed. I didn't see anybody scantily dressed, I just saw some chicks twerking, come to my family function and see women in their sixties, eighties, twerking, dear. That's just the way the world is. I got a question for you, basically, it looks like there's only been eight calls out for noise versus like a hundred and one for Bobby Salazar's, but Bobby doesn't look like it's closing anytime soon. So could you put like a decibel requirement on this business that if they go above that so many times? And that's really the only question I have, other than the sexist kind of statement that guy made, but that's it.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Flores.
Thank you.
Thank you, do we have any other individuals who would like to speak and support?
No additional hands.
Alright, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and open this to the public, any individual who would like to speak in opposition? If so, please state your name. So I see none in the chambers, do we have any individuals on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition?
No, we do not.
Thank you, let's go ahead and I'll have staff address Ms. Flores' concern about being able to limit decibel noise.
So section fifty, fifteen-twenty-five-oh-six is our noise, our, our noise ordinance, ordinance. I believe it's sixty-five? Commercial, from ten PM to seven AM, sixty decibels, and then seven AM to ten PM is sixty-five decibels. And then also, in section fifteen-twenty-seven-fifty-one, that's the restaurant with alcohol section, that explains that after ten PM, all doors and windows to the restaurant must remain closed. They can still, people can still come in and out, but they must remain closed after ten PM.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just add one additional requirement under that, that for restaurants with alcohol or just eating and drinking establishments, that the noise levels are to be monitored and by the, the, the business owner to ensure compliance with applicable noise standards. So it's kind of up to them to monitor noise levels, ensure that it's not exceeding allowable noise decibel levels.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. I'm gonna go ahead and have Mitch, Ms. Richardson and her representative, you can go ahead and address any concerns brought up by the police.
Thank you. With respect to the service calls that were out to Ms. Richardson's business, it's interesting that, again, out of the, all the calls for service, eight within a year were for noise complaints. However, Ms., Detective Hodge didn't even indicate what time of day those noise complaints occurred. They could have occurred during the day, it could have occurred after ten PM, it could have occurred before ten PM, we don't know. So the eight complaints, that's within the year's time span. As pointed out previously, Bobby Salazar's had a hundred and one complaints.
or gave her evidence. I'm not going to release that evidence to anybody. That has to be through our records department, and that has been explained. I have shown her copies, which I have actually included them in this. There was three pages of them in this presentation.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Diaz.
The calls for service, who pays for those calls? The property owner?
Taxpayers. The calls for service, those are generated, police officers are going to get calls to your location, and that's going to be basically a taxpayer cost.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys' time.
We're going to go ahead and open this to public comments. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak and support? If so, please state your name, address. I see none. Do we have any individuals on Zoom with their hand raised?
We do.
Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Lisa Flores with Shawna McKinley. First off, I really take umbrage to any paid staff calling a woman who is tweaking half, you know, basically scantily dressed. I didn't see anybody scantily dressed. I just saw some chicks twerking. Kind of my family function and see women in their 60s, 80s, twerking there. That's just the way the world is. I got a question for you. Basically, it looks like there's only been eight calls out for noise versus like 101 for Bobby Salazar's, but Bobby's doesn't look like it's closing anytime soon. So could you put like a decibel requirement on this business that if they go above that so many times? And that's really the only question I have, other than the sexist kind of statement that guy made, but that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Thank you. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak and support?
No additional hands.
All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and open this to the public. Any individual who would like to speak in opposition? If so, please state your name. So I see none in the chambers. Do we have any individuals on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead, and I'll have staff address Ms. Flores' concern about being able to limit decibel noise.
So Section 152506 is our noise, our noise ordinance, ordinance. I believe it's 65? Commercial from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 60 decibels, and then 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is 65 decibels. And then also, in Section 152751, that's the restaurant with alcohol section, that explains that after 10:00 PM, all doors and windows to the restaurant must remain closed. They can still, people can still come in and out, but they must remain closed after 10:00 PM.
Thank you.
Add one additional requirement under that, that for restaurants with alcohol or just eating and drinking establishments, that the noise levels are to be monitored and by the, the business owner to ensure compliance with applicable noise standards. So it's kind of up to them to monitor noise levels, ensure that it's not exceeding allowable noise decibel levels.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and have Ms. Richardson and her representative. You can go ahead and address any concerns brought up by the police.
Thank you. With respect to the service calls that were out to Ms. Richardson's business, it's interesting that, again, out of the, all the calls for service, eight within a year were for noise complaints. However, Ms. Detective Hodges didn't even indicate what time of day those noise complaints occurred. They could have occurred during the day, it could have occurred after 10:00 PM, it could have occurred before 10:00 PM. We don't know. So the eight complaints, that's within a year's time span. As pointed out previously, Bobby Salazar's had 101 complaints, and they're trying to make the comparison of Locked In to Bobby Salazar's, which is a stretch. All of the evidence presented by Detective Hodges, we were not provided. This is the first time we've seen this evidence. So trying to address this evidence at this stage without being prior, given prior notice of what was going to be presented, is very highly prejudicial to Ms. Richardson. And it does deprive her of a due process as far as trying to indicate what went on at these events that Detective Hodges is indicating creates problems at Locked In. With respect to the violation letter that was issued to Ms. Richardson, our firm personally responded to that violation letter, and we objected. We appealed. We indicated in our objection that there was no evidence to show that she exceeded the decibel levels for the noise complaint. It was an arbitrary and compressious complaint that didn't have any, that provided no evidence that her business was exceeded the noise levels. No further action was taken on that notice of violation. Nothing. No response to our appeal, nothing. The videos that Officer Hodges, Detective Hodges, my apologies, Detective Hodges has presented, again, we were not provided with these videos. As indicated, Ms. Richardson does allow for people that want to reserve to have parties. From the position of the camera, it's kind of hard to see what was really going on in those events. The officer didn't go in, and you cannot clearly see what food or what was, what was on the table specifically. All of this, all of the concerns by the police, by the police department and Detective Hodges are pure speculation at this point. There's no evidence to show that any of those concerns about the live music is going to continue with the conditions that Ms. Richardson has, will agree to. She, she will comply with the noise decibel level requirements. She will close her business at 12:00 AM. She will make sure that the doors and any, the outdoor patio door and the doors are closed and sealed, and she is agreeable to cease the music prior to closing to prevent any further complications or, or issues. At not, at, the ABC requirements, she is in compliance with. With respect to that violation, for the violation with, as far as ABC with the bartender, that bartender was a new hire, and unfortunately, she made a mistake in, in IDing an individual. Ms. Richardson took responsibility. She addressed the issue, and she complied with the ABC requirements, and she paid the fine. She didn't lag, she didn't, she took, she took assertive action to address the situation. Ms. Richardson is a businesswoman, and she is taking painstaking efforts to distance herself from the previous owner of Fat Boys. And that's what this is about. Detective Hodges and the police department are imposing every single problem Fat Boys has had onto Ms. Richardson and her business with no evidence, no substantial evidence. It's pure speculation on their part. And we, again, Ms. Richardson is requesting that the court, I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, this commission, remove the restriction for live music. And if they want to put the condition that any live entertainment comply with decibel levels, and, and I see at 11:30, she will, she will agree to those conditions and comply with those conditions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
I do. Are you saying the 17 calls for service are strictly speculations?
We don't, at this point, yes, because of the fact that, although, there's no evidence except that there was a service call. We don't know what the service calls were for. But Detective Hodges claims or presents, tries to present evidence that it was for loud music and some other thing, some other calls. But there was no follow-up reports. There was no, there was, there was nothing given, a citation given to Ms. Richardson for those loud music. There was no follow-up letter, but for that 920, 92022 violation letter, that was the only quote citation that was given to Ms. Richardson for loud music. Out of all of those calls.
Ms. Richardson, do you want to speak on that, or I?
Oh, I just wanted to say that the videos, they are on our social media, but if you look at our social media, it's basically older people, age 35 to 65. Some of them work down here. Some of them come in here for work. So it's not always this younger generation crowd. We only have that young generation crowd come into my business once a month.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions?
Yeah.
The detective said that in a, I believe, in a Type 47 license, you can't have private parties, that it has to be open to the public, so how are you handling that?
As I indicated earlier, Ms. Richardson does, does not close her place down for private parties. She accepts reservations, as with any other establishment, for, for large parties, but her business is open to the public. She, they just reserve tables so they can bring in their guests or whatever for a birthday party or for whatever event that they're celebrating.
And I actually leave two booths open, available for walk-ins.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We're going to go ahead and bring this back to the commission. Do we have any comments?
Just wanted to refresh the commissions on, on what you're, you're taking action on. So this particular operation is for a conditional use permit for a restaurant. So they have applied as a restaurant, not as a nightclub or a bar. So if you look in your staff report on page four, it describes what the requirements are to be a restaurant and to apply the requirements for a restaurant. So more than half of the sales are for food. They're operating as a restaurant, not as a bar or a nightclub. So when you make your determination, we, because a facility would become a nightclub after midnight, we looked at the application and determined, and staff's recommendation to you tonight is to allow the business to operate until midnight as a restaurant, not to go beyond midnight or to 2:00 AM as was originally applied, right? So we kind of split it in the middle. Instead of 10:00 PM, we said midnight for a restaurant, but not after midnight due to the location. The commission could make a number of determinations tonight. One, it could uphold the determination that we made and just approve it. You could make additional or different recommendations that would reduce that timeframe or place additional conditions of approval onto that recommendation. If you choose to either deny the application altogether, which is an option for the commission, or to extend beyond what the staff has recommended, you would need to make additional findings, and the Fresno Municipal Code findings are at the end of the staff report, and they're also in Exhibit K of the package. So I just wanted to kind of refresh as to where we were, right? Because this application has been appealed, it is then heard in de novo, meaning new again, so you're hearing this all over. And so you can either do what I and staff made a determination to do, or you can do something entirely different. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any comments or any motions from the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you have any receipt data or sales data that shows the distribution and percentage between food and alcohol?
We do not have that data with us tonight. The data can be accessed and provided if needed.
And actually, we did more food than alcohol this past taxes. So when I came down, down here.
I guess based on our sales tax, sales tax documents, you can indicate that the food sales were exceeded the alcohol sales.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I do have any additional comments or emotion from the commission?
If, if we were to uphold the staff's recommendations and deny the appeal, but you still are, the way I'm reading this, you're still allowing extension of their hours, but does it also not allow live music?
Correct. All of the conditions of approval and the police conditions of approval, with the exception of the time to close, would remain.
I, I'm torn because when Ms. Richardson opened her restaurant, she was allowed to have live music, I think. And now that's changed, so... But I see all the reasons why it might have needed to be changed, especially for the later hours. Is that true? They, when they opened it, she could have live music?
There was not a prohibition at that time, and so it was reevaluated when a request to extend the hours of operation to 2:00 AM. So we start over and we look at the operations, and does it really fit in with a restaurant with alcohol sales? And based on the input from the police department, we found to be able to make the findings that live music was one of those factors that would push it over the, over the edge in terms of not being able to make those findings.
Again, I'll bring this back to the commission. Do we have any motions? Comments? I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a second. I've got a motion by me and a second by Commissioner Lyde. Let's go ahead and please take your own.
Commissioner Lyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
No.
Commissioner Bray?
No.
Commissioner Wagner?
No.
And Trevin?
Yes. Motion fails. Do we have another motion on the floor?
Is it possible, you'll have to tell, tell us, is it possible for us to uphold the staff recommendations except for the live music part of it and put some kind of condition that, that if they get X number of calls about the music being too loud in a period of time, then they don't get to do it anymore? Is that a thing?
The, so, the commission may change the conditions of approval, absolutely. The enforcement mechanism is a little bit tricky, right? So you, you can certainly do that. It's going to require that if there are calls for service, that the police department would document and notify our office, at which point, then it would require a revision to the conditions of approval, and we would have to issue new. So essentially, we're revoking an entitlement, which goes through the same process as approving an entitlement. So it makes it a little trickier when you put, place that kind of monitoring requirement on it, because we would have to revoke the entitlement. You, yeah, you could limit, exactly. You could limit when the music has, I'm sorry, your city attorney has lost her voice, so I'm translating for her. You, you can absolutely place limits on the time that live music is in existence. So you can say live music until X time, but not after, after that. You could have certain days of the week and times of, of the day, et cetera. So certainly, you can change those conditions.
It seems like it would be more fair to her since she did open it with the idea that she could have live music for us to allow her to have it until 10 o'clock, because it is in a residential neighborhood, and I believe that's the time you have to cut off music in a residential neighborhood, so...
Generally speaking, for, for outdoors, right? So any kind of, so a, nightclubs can operate longer, right? And they can have live music. Restaurants can operate till midnight. Bars can operate later and have live music. However, the question is hours of operation for establishments and the, the noise. So the outdoor patio would have to be closed by 10:00 PM. And all, as staff stated, windows, doors, et cetera.
Well, I'm going to attempt to make a motion then, that we adopt the environmental assessment, and we, are we upholding the appeal or making a suggestion about the appeal that she would still be allowed to have live music until 10:00 inside with the doors closed? Is that a thing?
Yes, you can certainly do that. So you would adopt the environmental assessment, you would deny the appeal and uphold the action of the Planning and Development Department Director, but you would modify the conditions of approval to include a condition that would allow live music, but only until 10:00 PM indoors.
Yes.
Do you also want to make a provision on there that if the police gets caught X amount of times that it's going?
That sounded like it was hard to actually do.
You, you can, you can certainly do that. It, it is a little bit harder to monitor, but you can certainly do that. It's up to you.
Does the police department and ABC work together where if there is a significant amount of complaints, the licenses hold?
I, I would have to defer to the police department, but he's indicating that yes.
So I think if that was the case, then that would not necessarily be something that needs to be reported to the planning department, because the police department is communicating with ABC on that.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm making a motion that we do this with the condition that she is allowed to have live music until 10:00 indoors.
May I ask for clarification? Are we saying that the hours of operation will be until 10:00 o'clock?
Midnight, but then they have live until 10:00.
Midnight, but the music's off at 10:00.
And I'll add to that, music's off at 10:00 on Fridays and Saturdays, no live music during the week.
Commissioner Brady, you will have to go ahead and...
Okay.
Remember all those.
Okay, remember, I'm closer to 80 than 70, so it's always my excuse now. So I'm making a motion that we will adopt the environmental assessment, deny the appeal, but, and uphold the... the action of the Planning Development Department with the condition that she's allowed to have live music until 10:00 indoors on Friday and Saturday night.
So we have a very thorough motion by Commissioner Bray. We have a second by Commissioner Wagner. Let's go ahead and take a vote, please.
Commissioner Lyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
And Trevin?
Yes. So motion approves with Commissioner Bray's thorough conditions. All right, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. We have ID 231431. This is a hearing to consider developmental permit application number P2102699.
All right. Good evening, Planning Commission. Good evening, members of the public, both here in person and online. Thank you for bearing with us this evening. So this is the consideration, oh, I'm sorry. I'm Stephen Martinez, the planner who oversaw this project. And this is the consideration of development permit application number P21-02699, vesting tentative parcel map 2021-09, and the related final environmental impact report. So the project site is located northeast of the intersection of, of Marx and Nelson. It is right over 43 acres of property and the primary freeway access will be from Marx Avenue, which connects to State Route 180. The property is zoned as heavy industrial and that zone district allows for a variety of uses, industrial uses, including manufacturing, wholesaling, distribution, storage activities. And the approval of an office warehouse project on this property would be subject to a development permit, which is one of the items being considered tonight. The property is located in the center of an area which has planned land use designations of heavy industrial, light industrial, public, commercial highway. And yeah, those, those are the main there. So it is in the center and it is buffered from any planned residential So I do apologize if the text is a little small, but the development, development permit proposes construction of four office warehouse buildings that has a little more than 900,000 square feet of floor space, 201 loading dock doors, respective square footage and loading docks, doors are up there. And the proposed subdivision proposes to split the existing two parcels into four parcels, their respective sizes there. It is also proposed to have extensive on and off-site improvements, including but not limited to, limited to curbs, gutters, sidewalks, driver approaches, parking spaces, landscaping, so on, so forth. And here we have a site plan rendering showing the general layout of the proposed project, the largest warehouse on the east side of the property, the three smaller warehouses on the western side. And here we have an elevation rendering showing what the four buildings will look like. You will notice that the buildings include multiple facade patterns and colors to enhance the aesthetics of the buildings. So really briefly, as I mentioned, an EIR was prepared for this project. And an EIR is, is the highest level of environmental review we do for CEQA. And it analyzes the project's potential impacts on the environment. The document will also identify mitigation measures and alternatives to reduce the project's impact. And once a draft is complete, it is published for public review and comment. And at the end of the review period, the city is required to respond to all comments in a document called the Response to Comments. And there must be good faith and reasoned analysis in the response. And that's a, that's a key point there. Originally, an initial study was conducted for the project and determined that the topics in that top list there could potentially have significant impacts. And therefore, those topic areas were studied in depth in the EIR, and that's covered in Chapter Four of the EIR. Various technical and supplemental studies were conducted as part, as part of the EIR. And those are, there's a few of them there on that bottom list. And pursuant to the CEQA guidelines, environmental impacts can be classified as either less than significant, less than significant with mitigated incorporation, or significant and unavoidable. The project had five topic categories that were less than significant, six categories that were less than significant with incorporated mitigation, and zero that were significant Eight response letters were received during the public comment period. And consistent with the CEQA guidelines, minor text changes were made and were included into the response to comments to clarify any minor errors, omissions, or misinterpretations of the EIR. At the conclusion of the response to comments, there was not an increase to the number or the severity of the identified impacts in the EIR. And the clarifications and corrections put into the response to comments did not constitute any significant new information, which would have required recirculation of the EIR. And the city did exercise good faith and reasoned analysis in the response to comments. Here on the slide, we just have various dates for different noticing and public participation opportunities. These, these opportunities come from either state, state guidelines, the CEQA guidelines, or the Fresno Municipal Code. Now, next, I did want to kind of cover a couple of areas of controversy that I know are likely to be brought up tonight, one being air quality. That one was contentious throughout the entire drafting of the original initial study and then the EIR itself. I will say, however, that this is, this is something that the city took very seriously when we were drafting the EIR. I mean, I feel bad for our LSA consultant because we really required them to show their work in their analysis in both the initial study and the EIR. What is the methodology? What is being stated? How did we arrive to that conclusion? How do we know that that conclusion is accurate? And I, I can't tell you how many drafts we went through making sure LSA really did their homework to make this document sufficient. And there were multiple comments brought forth and they were addressed in the response to comments document. Next potential area of controversy is the final EIR. We did receive a comment that someone did not believe that the city properly prepared the final EIR. And they referenced the three sections on that slide, 15089, 15132, and 15372. Now, during the drafting of the final EIR, we were very diligent in making sure we were properly preparing the final document. And after this concern was brought forth, we re-reviewed these sections to ensure we were still compliant. And we are, our, our final EIR was appropriately One other potential area of controversy are truck routes. There was a comment that trucks that would be going to and from the project site would go through residential neighborhoods. The two primary access points from the freeway would be from Belmont Avenue, which connects to the 99, and then Marx Avenue, which connects to State Route 180. There's only some rural residential near the Belmont route. However, it was announced earlier this year that Caltrans is going to be closing that Belmont Avenue on and off ramp. So that route is eventually going to disappear, meaning the only access to the site, freeway access, will be from Marx Avenue to, to the 180, which that area right there is only zoned for commercial highway planned land uses. So the appropriateness of the project was examined with respect to the Fresno General Plan, compatibility with surrounding existing and future land uses, and its avoidance and mitigation of, excuse me, mitigation of potentially significant adverse impacts. Therefore, our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to certify the final environmental impact report and its related attachments, approve the development permit for the warehouse, and approve the parcel map for the subdivision of the parcels. And I, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have LSA? Is there a representative here too tonight?
Yes. So we have at least one LSA member, the primary planner for them who oversaw this project. She is on Zoom. And we also have another LSA member here with us in person.
Perfect. Well, we'll, we'll allow the applicant to speak and address any kind of concerns. Okay. Do we have any questions from the commission? We're good. Okay.
All right.
Let's go ahead and we'll have the, we're going to have the applicant or is it the applicant? All right. Let's go ahead and have the applicant, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Stephen, for that very thorough and thoughtful presentation for our project application tonight. I'm Paul Starn, representing Skanel Properties and our project application at 2740 West Nelson Avenue. In 1980, I just, just as a point of reference, I did graduate from Fresno State and I am a proud Bulldog. Skanel Properties is a privately owned industrial real estate developer with operations throughout the U.S. and Europe. We have deep ties to Fortune 100 companies who have worked, who we have worked with and for on a number of development projects. These deep ties have led to a lot of repeat business for us. Over the last several years, we've completed over $6 billion in development projects in these regions. In addition to these relationships with these Fortune 100 organizations, our project here was conceived and planned to appeal to both regional and local companies as well. When working with Skanel Properties, one large positive for users is that we have no preference between leasing a portion of one building to a local user over leasing or selling one or more multiple buildings, buildings to national users. We have maximum flexibility to work with small and large companies on either a lease and/or purchase transaction. In our application night, we are seeking a vesting tentative map, which will create four parcels, one for each building to achieve this maximum flexibility. While we do not have any identified users for the project in this business park, the many types of jobs possible are varied and could include logistics, advanced manufacturing, warehousing, and other types of well-paying jobs. With me tonight are some members of an extensive project team that include Todd Berryhill with the West Coast Regional Manager for Skanel Properties, John Kinsey, our local counsel, Nick Adino, our commercial real estate brokerage representative, and available virtually are representatives from HBA Architects, and Karen Wright, our civil engineers. These ten members, these team members are part of a large collection of professionals who have assisted us in preparing this application before you tonight. I'll try to keep my project comments relatively brief because Stephen did such a good job. But I think it's important to know that the Skanel Properties team has been working on this project for over three years and are very proud of the extensive and exhaustive process we have gone through to get here tonight. Simply stated, we have before you tonight a project application on 48 acres fronting on Nelson, Marx, and Hughes avenues. This land is in the city limits, zoned industrial, and was previously used as an industrial ag processing facility. I want to repeat these factors: in the city limits, zoned industrial, previously developed with an industrial use, and our application is fully consistent with this zoning. The application includes proposed development for four Class A industrial buildings ranging in size from 90,000 over 400,000 square feet. The property has the added benefit of immediate access to the Fresno area highway system. And the project has received approval from the District Three Project Review Committee. Our industrial business park, when complete, will consist of four parcels, four state-of-the-art industrial buildings, significant frontage improvements to Nelson, Marx, and Hughes with, with enhanced and extensive landscaping treatments throughout, as well as a completed signalized intersection, excuse me, at Marx and Belmont, and a new culvert crossing over the Houghton Canal at Hughes. You're also being requested to certify the EIR for the project. The EIR process is the most extensive and rigorous review for the potential impacts under CEQA. The investigation, studies, and reports have found that this project does not have any significant impacts with our thoughtful development program. And again, no significant impacts as determined under the EIR process. After three years of extensive review and evaluation, we are thankful to the planning department for their support to have the Planning Commission certify the final EIR and approve both our development permit and vesting tentative parcel map. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission? Commissioner Wagner?
Can you shed a little light on when the prior ag operations were on this parcel?
I believe it was a cotton gem.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes, can you elaborate a little bit on the parcel? What each parcel is more or less going to be? Is it going to be manufacturing? Is it going to be for retail? I mean?
Well, these are, these are industrial uses. So we don't have any identified users. But again, we work with some of the largest, you know, Fortune 100 companies throughout the, the country. So, I mean, it's, 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 again, it is oftentimes, these companies need to see the entitlement in place before they come forward.
Can you name a few?
What's that?
Can you name a few of those companies?
Well, I mean, anything would be speculative. I mean, we work with the largest companies in the country. FedEx, Home Depot, Lowe's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. We're going to go ahead and we'll go to the public. Do we have any individuals who would like to speak in support? Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Trevino. I'm actually staff here in our Economic Development Department. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We've been working with Skanel, the applicant, very closely on this project. And I just wanted to let you know that we are very supportive and excited about this, this development and the opportunities that it will present us to further market the city of Fresno, especially right now at a time when our industrial inventory, our available industrial inventory is quite low. So we're excited about the jobs that this project could bring to the city of Fresno, the increased tax revenue for the city of Fresno, and would like to just ask that you consider approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Kevin Dayton, a CEQA analyst out of Monterey. And second time I'm speaking here today about unfortunate misuse of the California Environmental Quality Act. You probably noticed that one of the big objectors here is a group called Fresno Residents for Responsible Development. And if you look in their comments on the draft environmental impact report, you'll actually see that they are a coalition of five labor unions: International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 100, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 442, Sheet Metal Workers Local 104, Sprinkler Fitters Local 669, and District Council of Iron Workers. And you may want to ask the applicant, have these groups approach them, asking for a project labor agreement to build this warehouse. And are these environmental objections, which once again, staff and the consultants seem to say this is an excellent environmental review document? Why does this particular organization continue to say that the environmental review is inadequate? What are they really looking for? And even if the applicant and the, and the environmental review fulfilled every request that's being made here, would it still be acceptable? Or is there a labor agreement that's part of this? I'll even note here, in this letter, you'll notice where it says, describes Fresno residents, they use a template and they call themselves East Bay residents, which shows you that they're just taking the template and they're using it, the East Bay. it, the East Bay Residents for Responsible Development. They do things like go after projects in Oakland and Emeryville and things like this. So, this is, this is a third time in nine months that you've been hit with this kind of activity for CEQA, and hopefully the city will say, you know what, we don't want this coming into our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Will Oliver, and I serve as the President and CEO of the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation. We're excited to be here this evening to support this project. We first met with Skanel almost three years to the date, and we are very excited about this developer expressing interest in our market. This is one of the first speculative national outfits to express interest in Fresno and to move forward with their investment, which is quite exciting. As Kelly had mentioned, this has a lot of potential for future job prospects. We compete nationally, we compete regionally, even internationally with other locations to try to recruit and land job creators of the future. Three years ago, when we were first meeting Skanel, for this particular submarket, the percentage of available buildings for job creators was around 6%. Today, it's 0%, and it's a similar trend throughout the Fresno submarket for industrial development. Speculative development such as this is also riskier. It indicates that this group is hedging their bets on the Fresno market today as well as its future potential. So, for us, this is exciting because projects do call in. They want to see available properties that offer a fast path to the marketplace. And also, for us, it's exciting because it shows the investment worthiness in Fresno for projects such as this. So, for those reasons, we're very supportive. On top of that, we do a lot of work in workforce development. Last year, we received a $23 million grant from the Department of Commerce to recruit, train 2,500 people into manufacturing, construction, transportation, business services careers. We are excited to work in partnership with the developer, in partnership with their future tenants, to make sure that we can afford job opportunities for those that need it the most. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rex Heim again with Western Electrical Contractors Association at 7328 North Reddington Avenue in Fresno, California. Once again, this is another project that's gone above and beyond with their EIR, showing that they're taking all the adequate steps to make sure that they're developing the way we need to here in Fresno and keeping the minds of the locals and their futures at the forefront of their operations. Again, these are the same delay tactics that we dealt with earlier in the meeting with CEQA and the abuse of CEQA, trying to extort whatever they might want out of, out of the developers, and we see it time and time again. These complaints come from the Fresno residents. I don't know if any of them are here tonight. I know they were mentioned as East Bay residents once in the letter as well. I do know there are a lot of people from Fresno, including myself, who are very excited about this project and can see the good that it can do. And I want to thank you all again for allowing me to speak, and thank you to the people deciding to invest in Fresno and who see the future that's gold as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Nick Audino, 1141 East Royal Dornoch Avenue, Fresno, California. I'm an industrial real estate broker with Newmark Pearson Commercial here in town. I've been selling industrial for the last 23 years here in Fresno and in the Central Valley. Again, I'd like to thank the city and city staff for the presentation today. It was excellent. Sometimes I can be critical of the city, but in this case, job well done, guys. Thank you for that. This project has been a long time coming. 2020 is when Skanel Properties first rolled into town. In fact, we took them to the EDC office. They met with Miguel. We kind of laid out some site plans. And so, we've really been trying to be forward-thinking and open to the public in this process throughout its design and eventual environmental review. Vacancy in Fresno for industrial is 1%. So, as we get inbound requirements for new occupiers that want to come into Fresno, we literally have nothing to show them. Right now, if I had a 50,000-square-foot requirement for Fresno, I could fill it. If I had 100, I can't. Out of the 50s available, there's one. So, the need for this 900,000-square-feet of new industrial space almost goes without saying. And, you know, this cycle, since we've been in the situation where we've had such low vacancy, we've lost thousands of jobs. And I am not kidding, thousands of jobs to neighboring counties, our friends in Tulare, our friends in Madera County, who have landed several million square feet of similar-type uses, uses that might otherwise have come to Fresno. Over the years, as, as companies come in, they look to Fresno first. Fresno is the beachhead of the Central Valley. It has the airports, the school districts, the population, the workforce, the amenities that these companies from out of the area are looking for when they come in. The only time they leave Fresno is because we can't cite them, or we can't fulfill the need, and then they could, they could look outward. Every requirement always follows the path of least, least resistance. So, I'm really excited to capture the jobs that this project will create, and thanks again for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak in support? Let's go ahead and move to Zoom. Do we have individuals with their hand raised?
Not at this time.
All right. Let's go ahead and we'll open this to the public, any individuals in the chambers who would like to speak in opposition. I see none. Let's go ahead and go to Zoom. Do we have any individuals with their hand raised?
We do.
Okay. Let's go ahead and let's make sure, please state your name and address before you comment. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Vang. Commissioners, my name is Kevin Carmichael on behalf of Fresno Residents for Responsible Development and Unincorporated Association of Individuals and Labor Organizations. Members of Fresno residents may work at this project site and may be exposed to construction emissions and other environmental impacts from the project. These workers and their families live in the community, and they will suffer from the same unmitigated impacts that we have identified as other residents will. A project like this one with significant adverse impacts in combination with other poorly planned projects can degrade the environment and overtax public services in ways that restrict future development opportunities or lead to actual construction moratoriums. We support the kind of projects that will allow for sustainable growth and development and continued construction employment. For these reasons, we urge the city not to approve this project because the city has not complied with CEQA or with the local land use regulations that govern the project. We submitted written comments to the city yesterday identifying significant unmitigated environmental impacts that neither the DEIR nor the city's responses to comments in the FEIR address. As detailed in our letter, there is substantial evidence that the project will result in potentially significant unmitigated air quality, health risk, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and transportation impacts. The city may not approve the project until it prepares a revised EIR that adequately analyzes and mitigates these impacts. For example, residents' comments on FEIR explain that the city failed to analyze the project's significant noise impacts. Residents' expert found that the project's construction and operational noise impacts will exceed the 65 decibel threshold established in the general plan, resulting in significant impacts to nearby residents. Additional mitigation measures beyond those required in the FEIR are necessary to address these impacts. Additionally, the FEIR fails to address residents' comments on the project's reasonably foreseeable use as a logistics center or other high-truck-trip generating use, which would result in increased greenhouse gas emissions, air quality, and transportation impacts during the project's operation. The FEIR also fails to demonstrate compliance with the noise element of the general plan, preventing this commission from making the findings necessary to approve the development permit for the project. We strongly urge the city to continue this hearing to a later date in order to fully consider our comments and to remand the project to staff to prepare a legally adequate revised EIR before bringing it back for public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals with their hand raised?
Yes.
Please state your name. Please state your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Lisa Flores with Shawna McKinley. I don't belong to any group, but I do use Roding Park a lot as my green space, and I know a lot about Roding Park and the surrounding neighborhood and the area in which this project's at. And, you know, I helped get the city $500,000 for their truck reroute study. So, you know, I kind of know a little bit about something. So, basically, my comments are, even though Caltrans is gonna shut down Belmont, that this project should not be, the truck traffic should never be on Belmont because there is a small community that is basically four sides, three sides of pollution. It's a small, low-income community of color. You do not need to be putting more truck traffic on Belmont, period. That's it. It can't handle it. Plus, until the city of Fresno does something with Belmont and the entrances and excesses to Roding, you have long lines on heavy-use days, and it literally seriously is just a matter of time before some little minivan with a lot of kids get hit by a big truck. It really is, because I have pictures, guys. Also, too, you need to look at air quality in the community and the community in which this, this structure is being placed. It, it's just a very bad place to put it. And I'm very concerned about the number of trucks and truck traffic. And also, too, how is this truck traffic going to intersect with our unhoused community that is out there in this area? As the city, you know, keeps playing whack-a-mole and dropping them off further and further out into the outer edges of Fresno, you're gonna be having these trucks running alongside increases, increased numbers of the unhoused community. So, this really needs to be looked at, and I don't even think it was addressed in the EIR. So, you might want to take a moment and take a breath and say, you have this low-income community of color by Roding that you need to look at in this high traffic, and they're gonna put a school on Belmont across from the park. So, how is that gonna affect all this? So, there's bigger issues about the traffic component here and air quality. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition?
No additional hands at this time.
All right. Thank you. You know, I'm gonna go ahead and do we have the representative from LSA address some of these questions? Go ahead. You can approach your podium, please.
Before, I just want to clarify, is, is Ms., is Kara Cunningham with the LSA as all?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, please. Yes, thank you. You can please put Kara on Zoom, and she can answer any questions.
Hi there. This is Kara Cunningham with LSA. I would like to, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so I would like to respond to the comment letter that was received yesterday by Adams, Broadwell, Joseph, and Cardozo, as well as the comments provided over Zoom just now by Kevin Carmichael. So, the comment letter in supporting technical studies do not provide any new information or issues that were not previously responded to in the final EIR. The commenter claims that the final EIR fails to disclose and mitigate transportation impacts. As identified in response B3-6 of the final EIR, the project includes industrial uses by tenants that have not been identified, and the applicant has confirmed that an Amazon facility is not under consideration to be a possible tenant. Therefore, using Amazon trip generation rates would not be accurate. And the trip generation for the project was developed using rates from the Western Riverside Council of Government Study, which uses a high sample size as well as higher trip generations than the ITE manual. Additionally, as stated in that study, the Amazon facility is an outlier and is, but does include Amazon to calculate the average trip generation. Additionally, as demonstrated in response B3-12, the Fresno COGS Activity-Based Model was used to estimate the project's vehicle miles traveled. The commenter is incorrect that the California State Travel Demand Model was used. In addition, the Fresno COGS ABM has external stations that account for internal-toexternal trips, which also account for pass-through traffic through the county. The trip lengths of the external stations were calibrated using trip lengths from the statewide model, which is a conservative approach. Additionally, the VMT analysis took into account all trips, including trucks, and the commenter's review of the VMT analysis is flawed and factually incorrect. The commenter also claims that the final EIR fails to address health risk impacts from transportation refrigerated units. This comment is addressed in response B3-42 of the final EIR. The air quality analysis contained in the EIR assumed that trucks accessing the project site would idle using main engines rather than an auxiliary power unit or plugging into onsite electrical hookups. This is a conservative assumption as loading docks are required to have electrical hookups, and trucks would run from that electricity during idling. It's unlikely that the trucks would only briefly operate on their own. It is likely that the trucks would only briefly operate on their own power when maneuvering onsite. As such, because TRU trucks would be required to plug in, any emissions would be minimal and would not result in significant emissions. The commenter also claims that the final EIR fails to address health risk impacts from backup generators. As detailed in response A4-6 of the final EIR, to be conservative, a supplemental analysis to evaluate potential emissions associated with equipment, emergency backup generators, and diesel fire pumps was conducted using the air quality model, CALI mod. Emissions would be well below thresholds and considered less insignificant. In addition, the toxic air contaminant of concern would be diesel particulate matter. And health risk assessments typically use PM10 emissions to represent DPM, diesel particulate matter. And PM10 emissions associated with the equipment would be minimal. Therefore, an updated health risk assessment is not warranted, and a significant health risk would not occur. It is also important to note that the project does not propose equipment, emergency backup generators, or diesel fire pumps. This additional analysis was included to be conservative. The commenter also claims that the final EIR fails to address impacts from valley fever and that it fails to include mitigation measures to reduce valley fever. As discussed in response B3-10 of the final EIR, the air quality analysis was prepared based on the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District guidance, which does not include requirements or thresholds of significance for addressing valley fever, and nor does CEQA. Additionally, the project would not exacerbate or significantly add to valley fever. Therefore, mitigation to reduce impacts is not required. The commenter also claims that the final EIR fails to disclose, analyze, and mitigate noise impacts. As identified in response B3-24 of the final EIR, the city's general plan policy, NS-1-J, states that the city considers a 3DBA increase to be a significant increase. Project operational noise increases would not exceed this threshold. For construction-related noise, mitigation shall only be required for a 5DBA increase. The project's construction noise increase would be less than a 5DBA increase and therefore would be less insignificant. In addition, although project construction-related noise would be less than the 5DBA threshold, construction has the potential to result in annoyance. Therefore, the applicant would be required to implement mitigation measure NOI-1 to reduce annoyance. However, again, construction noise would be less insignificant, and additional mitigation measures are not required. The commenter also includes a number of recommendations to reduce impacts related to air quality and greenhouse gases, and claims that the EIR fails to consider the Attorney General's best practices in mitigation for warehouse projects. The comment does not present substantial evidence of the identification of a potentially significant impact. Therefore, additional mitigation beyond what was included in the EIR would not be required. Lastly, the commenter also claims that the final EIR fails to disclose inconsistency with the city's general plan with the city's general plan subdivision map act and that the city cannot make the findings for the project, including approval of the land use permit. For the reasons explained throughout the draft EIR and the final EIR, the EIR properly evaluated the project's potential impacts, and the commenter has not presented evidence to the contrary. In addition, the EIR properly evaluated impacts related to transportation, air quality, health risk, greenhouse gas, noise, and land use and planning, and the project would not result in any significant unavoidable impacts. Are there any questions?
Do we have any questions from the Commission? Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Appreciate it. Advocate, Mrs. Starr, do you want to address any concerns at all, or are you okay with LSA's response?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and close our public comments. We'll bring this to the Commission. Do we have any motions or comments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Wagner. Do we have a second? I'll go ahead and second that. Okay. Let's go ahead and please take vote.
Commissioner Diaz?
Yes.
Commissioner Bray?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes.
And Chair Vang?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have any reports from the Secretary?
Yes, thank you, Chair Vang and Commission. Thank you for a long evening. I also wanted to thank you and everyone at the city of Fresno who made the California APA Conference a, just an amazing success. Over 1,500 individuals came through Fresno, probably a good thousand of those. Chair were planners, planners of every type, from transportation to environmental planning to urban and land use planning like you see here in our office every day. We really appreciate the support. We're glad that you were each able to attend some sessions and to gain some knowledge. We'll continue to have training opportunities and as they're available, but this will be the last time for about eight years that'll be in the Central Valley. So we appreciate that you took advantage of the four days that we had here and glad that you were able to participate. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. It's currently 8:59. Let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Everyone, have a wonderful night.